Okay. And it looks like our folks logging on is starting to slow down just a bit. And so I will go ahead and start with again, welcoming everybody and thanking you for joining us today. A couple more of our housekeeping items. First of all, if you didn't catch me before, please answer our little poll at the beginning here. That helps us capture the feedback of the sorts of stakeholders that we have joining us in these conversations. Today is the third in a series of four conversations that we're having that are very specific to a public comment space related to the Iowa's behavioral health districts. And this really reflects how will Iowa geographically design our behavioral health districts? Just like we've done in our prior two sessions, we'll cover a little bit of background information together today about what the redesign of behavioral health in Iowa lays forth for us as far as a vision to go forward. And that helps inform a facilitated conversation that will be guided by our partners from Health Management Associates, Annalisa Baker, as we get a little bit later on into the presentation today. We're also recording this presentation, so want everybody to know that we're recording for two reasons. The first is because we use an AI companion that helps us capture the information quickly and accurately. And the second is because we want to be able to post one of these town halls to our website to allow folks to either go back and review the information or to allow folks who are unable to join us at any of these public comment forums to be able to tune in and see that presentation information. And so again, thank you all for joining us today and we will go ahead and get started. Emily, if you could get us started with the beginning of sharing our deck. And so as I mentioned, today we are here to discuss Iowa's behavioral health districts. My name is Marissa Ayans and I serve as the Director of Behavioral Health for the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. Typically Director Garcia joins us for these conversations today, but she has been otherwise engaged. And so I will cover the information with all of you today. And just note that she is also shares her gratitude to everyone who joined us in our prior conversations and everyone who's joining us today to really help us build this work and build this system. So an overview of what we'll cover today. We'll do just a little bit of background information and really cover the overarching effort around Iowa HHS's system alignment work, where we've been and where we're headed. We'll dive in a little bit together around how behavioral health really kind of emerged as one of the focus areas and what the vision is for behavioral health as we go forward. And then we will make our way into that facilitated feedback space. And that's where we're going to ask all of you to give us some feedback about what this system looks like going forward. At the very end, we have some information that we'll share on the very last space that will give you a way to access this ongoing information that we're posting to our website. And also a way to access written comment if you prefer to give us a written comment versus a verbal comment today. So system alignment really emerged as work that developed as we were bringing together the work of health and human services. So we've come through this work of aligning a state agency. And we used utilized an external contractor, Health Management Associates, the same folks that are supporting us here today, to help us assess the current state of the HHS service array here in Iowa. We sought feedback from a wide range of stakeholders. We included town hall style meetings, stakeholder group interviews, a lot of survey data and seven roundtable conversations with Director Garcia last summer. We also, at the same time that we were doing that system alignment of work from a high, high level, we pursued and were awarded for a planning grant for certified community behavioral health clinics here in Iowa. And CCBHCs are outpatient clinics that are designed to ensure access to coordinated comprehensive behavioral health care. And one of the things that we realized as both of those endeavors were moving forward was that the feedback from Iowans developed to be consistent and really, really clear that Iowa's service array lacks the necessary connections. So the people that need to be able to talk to each other, to be able to accomplish things on behalf of the individuals who need the services, it wasn't working very well. The navigation was difficult, both for patients and for providers. Our outcomes are trending in the wrong direction and people in all levels of our system felt like they were burdened by unnecessary administrative red tape and that they were duplicating effort. Kind of a consistent theme of not knowing who's on first as we're seeking care for really high need individuals in particular. Feedback also consistently identified that behavioral health emerges as a top priority across all levels of our system, from state to local levels to what we see happening in the national space. And that made the call to action really, really clear that Iowa needed to create clear pathways for people who need care. We need to utilize our resources to support good outcomes. And we wanted to focus and streamline the effort and the administrative work to ensure that our funding and our effort is ultimately dedicated toward getting access to the things that we need in our system. We're ready for the next one, Emily.
Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. One second.
No worries, no worries. As Emily is working through, I'm going to continue to talk about what comes next. Oh, thank you so much, Emily. Here we are. And so what came next after that 2023 assessment was the recommendations, of course, the report that was developed by HMA. And then putting those recommendations into action. So in 2024, Governor Reynolds proposed landmark legislation, which outlined a new behavioral health service system for us here in Iowa. It let goes of it lets go of what came before and designs something brand new for us that really speaks to the call and the time and the effort that's involved. During the legislative session, Iowa HHS actively engaged with stakeholders all over the state and with our decision makers to incorporate feedback into that initial design and structure via perfecting amendments. It really was an incredible process to take part in. We took that feedback in, we ingested it. And all together as a group of Iowans, we built forth a piece of landmark legislation. And the legislature passed House File 2673 with significant bipartisan support. And the governor signed that bill into law on May 15th, 2024. The law aims to build a system that's focused on improving access for all Iowans. And for the very first time, we'll identify that prevention, early intervention and the recovery supports are integral into building a behavioral health service system. The law also addresses disability services in Iowa, which has historically also lacked consistency and clear access points for people with disabilities and their families. Disability services will be overseen by the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. And we'll go with the work that happens within the aging and disability services decision to receive intentional focus and attention and help build the capacity and the access points that we need to best support individuals and families who need those longer term services and supports. So if we really hone into the behavioral health system design, what we're really contemplating is building a system for Iowa's future. And that has a distinct vision that's outlined in the legislation. So the legislation articulates that vision. And it's an empowering vision really for us here at Iowa HHS and for all of you as system stakeholders, because it's building a shared responsibility model based on public health principles. This is the acknowledgement, the behavioral health really is public health. And it is in the interest of all of us together to build a behavioral health service system that is well coordinated, has clear access points, ensures that Iowans have access to services and supports, no matter where they live, reduces system redundancies by linking together the federal, state and local governance and authority, while at the same time eliminating the unnecessary layers of red tape and the duplicative effort that have often held us back from accomplishing what we're seeking to do. Ultimately, we're linking and directing our funding to better improve a measurable system outcome. So we're asking the question regularly, did it work? And if not, we're changing the plan, we're changing the things in order to deliver the results that we need. So as we think about this conversation, one of the important things that we really need to contemplate and really develop that is a shared understanding spaces, what's behavioral health? We haven't talked about this as far as terminology or in our systems prior to. So according to the American Medical Association, behavioral health generally refers to mental health and substance use or addictive disorders. It thinks about life stressors and crises and thinks about the stress related physical symptoms that are inherent in those things. It's commonly accepted and understood terminology and has been for over a decade. And it reflects an integrated approach to care that acknowledges that co-occurring conditions are the expectation and not the exception to the rule. Behavioral health disorders impact all of us. About one in five adults experience a clinically significant mental health condition. And about five and a half percent of adults are impacted by serious mental illness. About one in six individuals aged 12 and older battle the substance use disorder just in the last year. Nearly 23% of Iowans report binge drinking in 2022. And Iowa has the second highest binge drinking rate in the nation. And over one third of Iowa youth report that they feel persistent sadness or hopelessness. And 24% of high school juniors have experienced suicidal ideation. Behavioral health impacts all of us because it impacts our families, our friends, ourselves. And it becomes an important space where we need to gain traction in order to both prevent and intervene early, but also to offer appropriate treatment in the right times and right places. It's important that we contemplate how we do this work together and how we develop what is a consistent understanding of this work. For instance, treatment works and recovery is possible, not only possible, it's the expectation. About seven in 10 people who've ever had a mental health or addictive disorder are in recovery from their illness. For those who receive treatment, the number climbs to over 90%. So focusing on recovery is hopeful. And it's also a very important paradigm shift in how we do this work. Focusing on recovery signals the importance of prevention and early intervention and the expectation of a positive outcome for individuals who experience mental health, substance use or co-occurring disorders. And that's because behavioral health as a focus is far more than treatment. It's prevention and early intervention and a focus on opportunities that create awareness and build resiliency and connection at the individual, family and community level. It's recovery support that ensures that people have access to the non-clinical supports and tools that they need that improve their health and wellness, overcome barriers and lives a self-determined life. Peers, for instance, play a significant role in how we build out recovery support. It also contemplates crisis behavioral health services and the intention to serve anyone, anywhere, at any time. The goal of crisis behavioral health services is to de-escalate individuals, divert them from law enforcement involvement or emergency rooms whenever possible, and wrap support around individual, family and community to stabilize the crisis and connect to aftercare and support. It doesn't take away the need to be able to work with our emergency rooms and our critical access hospitals or our law enforcement and first responders. It simply says that there are many instances when we can divert away from those resources and should do so by a successful build in crisis services here in Iowa. The legislation lays out a framework for behavioral health administrative service organizations. These will be lead entities in our behavioral health districts. So it's important to understand what might a behavioral health administrative service organization do? Well, they're charged with both ensuring access to a network of high quality service provision and helping Iowans navigate to the services they need when they need them. The behavioral health administrative service organizations are funded through a combination of state and federal funding. Iowa HHS is charged with hiring behavioral health administrative service organizations to organize local service delivery and ensure that access. The focus is on high quality delivery as defined in the statewide behavioral health plan. The connection and collaboration with local decision makers is a key component of a successful behavioral health administrative service organization model. We need to connect with schools, with law enforcement and with local decision makers to ensure that what is laid out in a statewide plan and responded to in a district plan is happening for those key people on the ground who need these access points to work. There are certain services like crisis services that'll be required and available for all Iowans, regardless of their location and their ability to pay. There are other services or what we think of as a behavioral health safety net that'll be defined at the state level and via the state planning process and organized and funded at the local level by the behavioral health administrative service organizations. These safety net services are provided when individuals have qualifying needs, but may have no other neat means to pay. It helps us focus our attention and our funding into those spaces that catch folks when they have no other resources available. Guided by the statewide plan, behavioral health administrative service organizations are also charged with building and leveraging local collaborations and partnerships to better improve outreach, education, prevention and early intervention, and ensure that at the local level, we're all marching forward together. So rather than kind of working in these individual silos that have historically been part of how we've done work for such a long period of time, we're looking at a comprehensive system that's all pulling together in the same direction. There are a handful of things that change very significantly as we implement the new law. That includes changes in our current structures and it brings together work that's been historically fractured. It eliminates Iowa's 13 current mental health and disability services regions. It eliminates the 19 substance use service areas and the 37 tobacco community partnership areas. And in their place is a new behavioral health system with local districts to organize administration and service delivery at the local level. All of the work continues forward in a coordinated fashion. All districts are required to coordinate a wide array of local function and includes that full scope of prevention, early intervention, treatment, recovery and crisis care. Each behavioral health administrative service organization is advised at the district level by a 10 member council. And that council includes local elected officials, people with lived experience, professionals and law enforcement. Iowa HHS will use the information collected in our prior system assessment work and gather additional information from folks just like you to help us inform the development of a statewide plan for behavioral health. The statewide plan will guide the new behavioral health service system and will focus its ongoing work. Statewide planning is defined as a shared responsibility. We can't construct a statewide plan from in Des Moines, from an Iowa HHS perspective. We need local feedback to be able to do that. We need all of you. And then we are responsible for producing what is the summary version essentially of what have Iowans identified as the as the important areas, the things that we need to focus on? And how are we going to do this work going forward? At the local level, each behavioral health administrative service organization is responsible for developing its district plan. And the district plan has to align to the statewide behavioral health plan. It outlines how the behavioral health ASO will meet the requirements at the local level. Iowa HHS will continuously engage in gathering feedback from stakeholders in a continuous quality improvement fashion. We'll assess the system performance and use that information both to leverage successes. So those pilot programs or pockets of success that we see today, as well as to hone into areas of need, the spaces that we see that aren't working and need further development essentially or further review. The ongoing feedback process continues to inform the design and the development of the behavioral health system in a regular cadence of statewide planning that continues to engage Iowans to ensure that the system itself maintains both a consistency that we need on a statewide basis as well as a flexibility to create change as we develop the work. From a high level, this new build helps us define the roles at the state and local level. So this gives us kind of an idea of what that might look like. There's a role here for Iowa HHS in how we think about who establishes those service system districts, for instance, and how we take the feedback that we get from the public and incorporate it into a statewide planning process. This is the space where we hold the responsibility to our federal space and how we administer the funding to the lead entities, how we develop the planning and how we develop the service definitions. It provides training and technical assistance both to our lead entities and to our providers. And provides that the activities that are indicated within the state plan are tracked and accomplished in the way that it's been laid out. At the local level, the lead entities are in the behavioral health model, what we think of as these administrative service organizations. They have a distinct role as well. So they're developing and implementing a district wide plan to enact the state planning at the local level. They have to ensure coverage, they have to ensure access. They have to make sure that their contracts with local providers are in place and are comprehensive. This is also a space where we're thinking about training and technical assistance and how we think about what the providers are able to hook into for resources. It ensures that service quality and performance outcomes are consistent. And it may provide those additional activities and services that are indicated in the district plan directly or may contract out for them. The lead entities will collaborate with HHS and with other district lead entities with the service system itself to ensure that the system is working together in a continuous fashion that supports our provider network and also supports individuals who need access to care. And finally, the lead entities are responsible for reporting progress and outcomes as designed by HHS so that we can cascade that information into the federal space. For local providers, you'll have contracts with those entities and provide the activities and services according to the lead entity and according to the district planning. Providers collaborate with the districts themselves and with other local providers to ensure service provision is widespread and consistent and reports their progress and data outcome back to the administrative service organizations. So as we think about how this work progresses, we wanted to touch briefly on what the timeline looks like for implementation. So right now, of course, we're in this exploration period. We just hit, of course, last week, the first of July, the official kickoff where the new law is now formally in place. Implementation really is a process and not an event though. And so we started this work, of course, as soon as we really could tell how it was developing with our decision makers and kind of the direction that we were going. It's not always precisely linear, but we're portraying it as a line here just to give us an idea of how we progress through. So during an exploration phase, we're communicating about strengths and needs. We're taking in a lot of this feedback and we're identifying these possible effective innovations, for instance, that help us fill current gaps. We're thinking about exploration as this phase that really carries us through the end of the year and has some key timelines identified in it. So the first, we've already done it, which was we published the initial transition plan to our HHS website just prior to the first of July. That's the high level overview or a deeper dive really into an implementation timeline. That's also something that we'll update throughout because part of the implementation work is somewhat iterative as we think about how we transition from the current state system to the future state. So as we gather additional feedback from our stakeholders, we incorporate that additional feedback into our transition planning and into the future state planning as well. So on or before August 1st, we will finalize the behavioral health districts. And that is a space that we must include public comment or stakeholder feedback. And that is the reason for our conversation here today. On or before the end of the year, 1231 of 2024, Iowa HHS must designate a behavioral health administrative service organization for each district. And then we submit a report to the legislature by mid-January that outlines the cost for establishment, implementation and administration of this behavioral health service system. As we head into an installation period, we're contemplating the work that happens from January 1st through June 30th of 2025. And that includes things like really diving in deep to think about what are the job descriptions in our behavioral health administrative service organizations? What are those job descriptions here at Iowa HHS? How are these systems working together? How are we training both the future administrative service organizations as well as our provider network to make this transition for July 1st of 2025? Thinking about our data collection and resources, thinking about our establishment of protocols. The installation period is where we really are working to establish what is going to be the standard operational procedures that we need in place and the structure and the system in order to support what goes live on 7/1 of 2025. As we make our way through installation, that's also a space where we're thinking about training and technical assistance. We're thinking about gateways for our behavioral health administrative service organizations, gateways that ensure readiness, so ways that we're testing the readiness of the organizations themselves to ensure that when we are ready to go on July 1st of 2025, that the organizations are ready to support that effort. This is the space where we're also finalizing the work in the systems that are getting ready to sunset. So those things that are going away, how are we closing out? And how are we developing those procedures to make sure that the funds are transitioned? For instance, make sure that we are able to close out contracts, doing all of that work as well. On July 1st of 2025, we implement a new system and our first and very primary objective is don't break it. Right? We want to ensure that essentially on July 1st of 2025, that what we have coordinated is a seamless transition to something that is new and gives us a framework and a potential to build forward, but doesn't lose the important things that we have today that ensure that folks have access to the care that they need. That's the primary objective that we all work on together. And part of that is the work of exploration and installation to both identify and then plan for those things that exist today to make sure that we carry them through. Then as we continue forth and we've built a new system, we've built a new structure and framework, we think about continuous quality improvement. So once we get beyond the operational metrics of standing something up and making it work in a general sort of way, we want to talk about making it better. And that's the work that we get to do together as we carry forward in a statewide planning process and an ongoing continuous quality improvement structure that both plans for and then evaluates how things are going on a regular basis. Okay. So that's a little bit of that kind of overarching background information that we wanted to be able to share with everybody today. Our other objective today is to receive public comment from you related to the design of Iowa's behavioral health districts. So now that you've had an opportunity to kind of see some of this vision, get an understanding of where we're headed in the future and contemplate how those functions might work together in an overarching system. We'd like to hear your feedback about the system design. I'm going to show you a few examples to help get you thinking. And then we'll make a transition to asking you for your feedback. So first, as a reminder, legislation required the consideration of city and county lines, population size and effective delivery, areas of high need in the state of Iowa and patterns of access to care. So during the process of developing our legislative work, many of you might have seen this first example map that's here on the screen. This map is reflecting patterns of care related to behavioral health treatment here in Iowa. It contemplated how people access care in the current state. Where do they travel to? Where are some of those hubs? And then thought about things like ensuring that city and county lines, for instance, were brought together in a way that makes sense. This is one iteration of how we would look at it that looks very narrowly at behavioral health information alone. The next map contemplates how current state area agencies on aging and ADRC areas could also potentially be leveraged as we think about a behavioral health district design. This is a way of acknowledging that individuals with aging and disability related needs also frequently have co-occurring need for behavioral health support. And that the systems themselves are frequently partnered together, especially today in our mental health and disability services regions. So how we think about supporting these high need individuals could be reflected then in adopting a map that has similar boundaries. This is also one example that uses an existing design rather than builds something new or different as we think about how district maps could look. The third option contemplates leveraging the capacity of an existing lead entity that's coordinating systems level work within a new HHS shared responsibility model. So we can think about this as a bit of a zooming out, for instance. This option acknowledges the potential of community action agencies, local public health entities and others who have existing coordination experience and may be interested in contemplating how behavioral health fits at the local level. These entities could potentially serve as lead entities for multiple HHS system functions. And we can contemplate how a framework would look when we consider the district design for Iowa's behavioral health service system and then potentially how that carries forward into the future state. Okay. And so with that, I am going to hand it over to Annalisa. And Annalisa is going to take us through facilitated feedback. And as a reminder, Annalisa is going to have a handful of questions that are the same questions that we've been using in our public comment period throughout. And she'll ask for your feedback about those questions. And as we make our way through, you'll be able to use like a hand up to be able to let us know that you have something to respond to or something to say in response to Annalisa's questions. Annalisa, if you're ready, take it away.
Thanks, Marissa. Hi, everyone. Also, just a reminder, each person responding will have up to two minutes to respond. We have four questions to ask in the remaining 30 minutes today. So we're going to try and keep it to about seven to eight minutes per question. And there are 499 participants on this call. So I will ask that you all raise your hand. That is the way that I know that you have a comment. Otherwise, and then you can then unmute yourself. And I will do my best to make sure that everyone is heard. So with that, we will move to the first question, which is what considerations are most important for planning behavioral health district boundaries? And by considerations, we mean funding, workforce, provider capacity and things like that. And so I see that Herman Kornbach has your hand raised. And so please provide your comment.
Well, thank you. Just so everybody knows, I'm the state senator from Ames and I've been a member of the Tobacco Commission for more than 20 years now. I appreciate the presentation today, the introduction for your planning process. The considerations that are most important here, I think, has to start with the recognition that you don't get to reinvent the wheel. You're not starting from a clean slate. You already have organizations in place. In the tobacco area, we have community partnerships which have existed for many years who work at the local level, who are able to respond to local concerns and able to identify and use local resources. That's a theme that is very consistent with what you've been promoting in the program today. But I hope that we won't lose that. You also mentioned the outreach to the entities, one of which was high schools. The tobacco program has an active outreach program with a program called EyeStep. The high school clubs around the state are a great opportunity for leadership development for the kids and also a very effective means for using peer pressure or peer persuasion, if you will, to influence kids not to get involved with tobacco and smoking. I think anybody who's ever raised a teenager knows that the peer pressure has a lot more effect than anything coming from any adult. So you know, the coordination opportunities are wonderful. And that's something Tobacco Commission has been doing for a long time, coordinating with Alcoholics Beverages Division, Cancer Society, Heart Lung, all of those groups, as well as other state entities, the Drugs R, the Department of Education, the Attorney General, et cetera. So like I say, So like I say, we're not in a position to reinvent the wheel. But in fact, we have existing models that should be built upon. The one concern I have, and this is my long-term devotion to fighting tobacco addiction, is that we not lose focus on that particular area. Obviously, it intersects with a lot of other behavioral things. But the, you know, the progress that we have made with the Clean Air Act, with reducing smoking, is is just something we don't want to lose. I don't want to see tobacco get lost in a larger bureaucracy. And that is that is my fear here. We need to avoid that. It's the leading killer, leading preventable cause of death in the United States and will continue to be for quite some time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator. I'm going to call on Lynn Niblink.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you. I, Lynn Niblink, and I actually work for HHS. I've worked in the behavioral health and disability space for quite a number of years. My, just answering this question, my opinion and my thoughts and my anxiety has been around ensuring that we have adequate workforce and provider capacity and the expertise of the existing entities or providers in whatever boundaries we set. That's all.
Thank you very much. Esther Houston?
Hi, thank you for this time again. I agree with a lot of what the senator said. Adding to that, as a parent, I see a huge issue with evidence-based services being offered, not just in some of the programs, but all of them. For instance, right now with my child with the mental health waiver, I cannot access music or art therapy, which is a modality that is very important for children with his diagnosis. Workforce is a huge issue, still can't get access. So these districts need, there has to be a way to communicate within the districts about helping people to know what's available for therapies. So I guess one of my big questions is what services? Who's deciding what services are going to be covered in these behavioral health districts? Are they going to vary from health district to health district? How will that be determined? But workforce is a huge issue, funding, all of it, it all goes together. We can have the best districts in the world, but if we don't have providers, it doesn't matter.
Thank you very much. Angela?
Thank you so much for having me. I am also with the Division of Tobacco as a community provider or partner, excuse me. So I'm a local C P on the local division. But my comment is when we're looking at boundaries for districts and things of that nature, is what are the boundaries in the districts going to be for the public health districts when it's time to divide that? My concern is that if behavioral health districts are different than public health districts, then we don't get away from the siloing impact. And if we have some people that are, say, working in counties that are serving behavioral health district number one, but then they're in public health district number two, and your ASOs are not working, you're working with this ASO over here and this ASO over here, it makes the fluidity a lot harder. So I guess my biggest concern is when we're looking at districting maps and boundaries for behavioral health, that they should be considered to be the same districts across all HHS provider lines to make those collaborative services a lot easier. Just my thought.
Thank you so much, Angela. Chad Jensen?
Hi, yes, I'm Chad Jensen with New Opportunities in Western Iowa. And looking at this question of considerations, New Opportunities currently does have the workforce and we do have the capacity. And we have got partnerships and collaborations totally established and going very, very well. We're all about option three. That's that's the best and and the best option for us regarding these behavioral districts. If we look at having to do other districts for us, it's going to divide our organization is my is was what I'm very fearful of. And how is that going to work with funding and having to work with different ASOs and just that whole process? I'm just really concerned about the years and years of hard work that we have put together in partnerships and collaborations with school districts, county public health, even other social service organizations. I just think it would just be a really a disservice to Western Iowa. So think option three.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna call on two more people for this question because we have to get through three other questions. So Susan Witty and Rebecca Neal, you'll be the last two on these questions, and then we'll move on to the next one.
I would ask you to consider the the weight of provider capacity. There are cities that have a lot more providers and rural areas that do not. I've worked in the eastern Iowa area for thirty years, providing school mental health services, outside providers coming in. We, I see a problem with any of the three options that you gave us. I saw weaknesses in all of them. And I think the way to expand the network is if there is a a heavy concentration of providers in one area like Des Moines, you know, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, we've got, we've got, we've got places that that could expand out. And I saw that some of those entities not only overlapped, but they also, they also were restricted. So let's use our provider capacity in those large areas, please.
Thank you so much. Rebecca Neal?
I'm a retired psychiatrist. For years, Grinnell and Paushe County and Jasper County have been included together in the behavioral health services provided by what's currently known as Capstone. I am very concerned that all three options will divide the two counties into different districts. And I'm worried about what that's going to mean for workforce issues for people that do currently work here at Capstone, what it's going to mean for funding and what it's going to mean for the consumers who are getting services, who will be forced to make choices about their providers. And I, for people who've been in treatment or who are chronic patients, a year is not a very long time to to be able to make these, make these transitions. So that's a, that's the greatest concern that I want to share. I would hope that there could be some way of allowing Paushe County and Jasper County to continue to to work together.
Thank you so much. Let's move on to the next question. All right. Do any of the proposed district options reflect community needs and resources? Why or why not? Any hands raised? Leslie Carpenter?
Good afternoon. I think currently one of the maps, and I apologize, I had to check into the airport. So I didn't see the maps today. But of the maps that were presented, there were two that shared Lynn County with Johnson County being in the same district with the more northern counties. That is what we would prefer in this area in terms of how the services have been provided, the usual community collaborations, et cetera. Moving only Johnson County down into the bigger southern district. I don't think that really listically, a lot of those people in the real southern counties are going to come all the way up to Johnson County to receive services. And I think it won't work quite as well. Thanks for considering my input.
Thank you. Todd Noack?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not on camera because I'm still recovering from a surgery. But I'm thinking about this and the last question that was asked too. You know, just thinking about this, I see a lot of, you know, urgent care places that are up and open and, you know, professional physicians. And so I think sometimes when we think about that and we have allergy problems, that we probably don't go to the hospital, to the ER. And so the community needs and resources that we really lack in this state and I think needs a lot of consideration for the workforce and for the communities and the needs are thinking about, one of the words that I've heard all this time, and that is prevention. And I think peer services, especially from peer-run community organizations, is very vital and very important for that prevention before you have to get to the next level of care where you're not walking into an ER because you have allergies or because you might have a cold, right? So I think that prevention in peer services and peer-run organizations is very vital.
Thank you very much. Andrew Allen?
Andrew Allen, President and CEO of Y S S. I spoke up at the initial meeting, just advocating on behalf of youth and young adults, you know, thinking about the work that the governor put into creating a specialty system for children's behavioral health in the state of Iowa and just wanting to acknowledge that whatever the structure is, we need to continue to ensure that youth and young adults are thought of separately and have specialty services. I like behavioral health. We, as an organization, like behavioral health district option one. It it looks the most familiar. All of these have pros and cons. But a significant amount of regional infrastructure has been built up over the past several years. And so as we think about, especially this question specifically, as it relates to resources, district map option one, I feel like most closely aligns to infrastructure that's been built to support kids, families, adults across the state.
Thanks very much. Alan Beerbaum?
Hello, I'm also focused almost entirely on children's mental health. The thing I would say when I look at these and think about community needs, I think we should focus on family needs, patient needs, and focus on regions that help families to get the resources they need best. So I think something like option one seems the best, although I would probably take the bottom of the purple and put it into the center. Because when you think about it from a family perspective, it's really about like the, the areas of service and where is a family going to go? Like common clusters, you know, like a family in Story County is going to go to Polk County for psychiatric services, right? They're not going to travel north. So I I understand, looking at this from organization perspective, but I would maybe challenge that we look at it as looking at it from the patient and the the kid's perspective on what serves them best, maybe not what organizationally is best. But that's my thought.
Thank you. I'll take more, one more comment from Chris Rankin on this question, and then we'll move on to the next question.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to share from the perspective of southeast Iowa. I'm in Van Buren County and I work in Lee County as well. I've been a participant in the Seal Region for over ten years. And what our greatest concern really is, is making sure that the patterns of how counties have been working together naturally continues instead of just assigning areas. And, you know, like Lee and Van Buren County work well together because we're neighbors and we share a lot of information with each other and work together in other areas. So making sure that counties like that continue to be allowed to work together. And then also with that being said, making sure that rural areas like ours are taken into consideration for funding because it is more expensive for us to treat mental health in our area because of the distance to providers and the ability to work with people. So thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. We're going to move on to the next question. Are there any areas or communities that should be in a different district than in any of the proposed district options and why? There are some folks that commented on specific counties and and different areas moving together and the way people seek care. So this is a good question, question to be able to respond to. I see Jackie Mim?
Yeah, I guess I I wanted to respond to the previous question. I I don't much have comments about how the districts are shaped, but the gentleman who talked about having urgent care centers or something like that for walk-in needs is totally needed. I have issues with my kids and every now and then I found, call Foundation Two. And it takes, you know, about an hour for them to come to my house. And when I need the help is when I need the help, not in an hour. So I'd like to be able to just, you know, go somewhere in the moment and have some people to talk to with me and my kids.
Thanks so much.
Sure.
Rebecca Neal?
I would like to reiterate my comment about the longstanding cooperation between Jasper County and Paushe County. And I would also add that most people in Paushe County, at least in the Grinnell area, if they need services, they're likely to go into Des Moines for more specialized services. So putting Paushe County and some of these other clusters does not make sense from a service point of view and a general inclination of of residents.
Thanks so much. Russell Wood?
Yes, I would like to comment, I think, a little more generally. And I think that maybe there's some confusion on those maps are not going to restrict an individual from getting service anywhere they want in Iowa. It's more of an oversight. And I think that's important for people, especially, I know I heard the comment from somebody about if somebody lives in Ames, are they not going to be able to go to Des Moines to get services? And I don't think that's at all the case. When you look at the map, I think that something that's very important is, is, and this was brought up again last week, is look at collaboration. I know that some people have talked about that. And what do those collaborative efforts look like if that is a primary focus of the ASOs, which I did see on your map or on your, excuse me, your PowerPoint, that that is one of the things that you want them to do? Looking at what do those collaborations look like in the community? I know that there are a lot of people who are saying, please don't change my map. I am currently the CEO of C I C S, so you are changing my map, you're eliminating it, you're eliminating me. And so I am coming in here and saying, without looking at my personal self-interest of keeping my map, I do think that the map number one, and that could seem a little self-interest, but map number one does reflect the work that has been going on in the state for the past thirteen years with behavioral health. And when you think about it from a behavioral health district, I would encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Jenkins?
Hello, yes, Kristy Jenkins, Behavioral Health Director for New Opportunities. Just as I look at this map and I think about Western Iowa, West Central Iowa and other services as well. New Opportunities is a very unique organization in that we provide both behavioral health and are also a community action agency. And so just personally speaking, in seeing clients up in Sack County, I had an individual in my office as a substance use client whose stomach I heard rumbling. And because of the nature of where we were at and our organization, I was able to be like, oh, my gosh, I hear your stomach rumbling. When's the last time you've eaten? And he said it had been three days. And so I was able to get a food pantry for him right then and there. The only map that keeps our ability to really address social determinants of health like that in terms of, and in looking not only just at our organization, but the way our rural counties are set up, map three is really the only one that keeps community action and behavioral health substance use together.
Okay, thank you. We'll take one more question on this question or one more comment on this question, and then we'll move on to the last question. Barbara Grant?
I just wanted to say, so I'm working at Community Action Agency in northeast Iowa. And if, in fact, the map that's chosen for behavioral health becomes the map for subs, uh, future, I guess I can't say that word, for future HHS services, then I think all of the planning, I mean, all of the groups should be included in deciding the maps. I I don't think everything should be driven by behavioral health if. if ultimately, public health service areas are going to be driven or, you know, decided by this and things. I, I'm, I have a great concern about that. I also think that the Community Action Map does make quite a bit of sense from the standpoint of the relationships, the interconnectedness that exists in those areas. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that it, if in fact, this is going to be dictating future districts, then, then I think more people need to be included, not just behavioral health. Thanks.
Great, thanks for your comment. Next question is, what is essential to a smooth transition to a new system design that maximizes resources and minimizes disruptions to care? Arlene Prather O'Kane?
Prather O'Kane, that's all right. I, I guess, looking at the maps and listening to all this, I guess I'm going to be more general, even more so than everything that's being specifically district-wide. And, and I guess, you know, Iowa has had a, you know, healthiest state in the nation. And right now Iowa's 51st for mental health and behavioral health in the country. And part of that is because we don't have enough providers. So I think, you know, somebody else made a comment about that too. If you don't have any providers, you don't have care. So how is the state going to be addressing that more? And then getting into these districts? Because I honestly, I don't, I don't know how we're going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Whitaker?
Yes, hi, Rich Whitaker, the CEO of Vera French Community Mental Health Center in eastern Iowa. You know, I think it's important that we remember the ASOs and the funding and services they coordinate within the behavioral health districts represents actually less than 10%, significantly less than 10% of the whole behavioral health funding and services provided in Iowa. Let's not forget that the lion's share of behavioral health funding and services is provided through Medicaid and Medicaid providers. As we think about behavioral health services provided and coordinated in Iowa, unless we're somehow connecting and coordinating services with Medicaid, then we're missing an opportunity to truly create a coordinated statewide system.
Thank you. Linda Matkovich?
Hi, thank you. I'd like to piggyback on what he just said. You know, our daughter is on both Medicare and Medicaid. And so insurance is a huge thing that we deal with. And just, I think that's a piece that will minimize disruption is making sure that providers know how insurance works. I'm constantly battling with that in educating that Medicare is first for her, medic, I'm sorry, Medicare is first for her and Medicaid is second. And then our private insurance is third. And it's very unusual, but it's because her dad's retired. And so it's just, we're constantly getting things sent back from insurance. And it's just, you know, it's a waste of time for a lot of people. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Kara Warren?
Thanks, appreciate the information today and the thoughtful approach here. I'm a state senate candidate representing Story and Marshall County, thinking about smooth transition, needing really clear information on what's changing and what's not to help people find access to the care that they need. I'll reiterate the points several other, others have made in terms of kids and families needing specialized services and in those moments of crisis, which you emphasized earlier, really bringing in crisis care to the focus here. So just making sure that information is available, regardless of where you live and where you're seeking services, to know what your options are and what's changing and not changing.
Thanks so much for your comment. Stacy Warner?
Hi, Stacy Warner, with Senior Vice President of Operations for Trivium Life Services. And we provide services throughout different communities in Iowa. And I wanted to echo what several other people have said, but just emphasize that the, a, a smooth transition is really going to be dependent on the collaboration and the intertwining of all of the different redesigns that are occurring right now in different human service entities. We have services for chronically mentally ill individuals that are often funded by habilitation through HCBS that have been carved out of this behavioral health system redesign and are part of the new Aging and Disability Services Division. They're going to have different regions. We have our waiver redesign under HCBS. We all work with MCOs to provide services. The people that we serve move fluidly back and forth amongst those different systems. And we have so many redesigned processes going on right now that have different phases, different regions, different, different timelines. And I'm really concerned that we're going to miss people in the gap and that as people fluidly move back and forth between those systems, they're going to have different requirements, providers are going to have different requirements, and it's going to make it more difficult for us to meet the needs, which I know is not the intent.
Thanks so much. I'm going to call on Cheryl Jones.
Yes, thank you. I'm Cheryl Jones. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner from southeast Iowa, rural southeast Iowa. And I think an essential for smooth transitioning is a clear understanding that the needs, the unique needs of children and adolescents have to be incorporated into this. They are not miniature adults. And a system that's been designed around aging or around adults has to include folks with expertise, parents of children with special needs, the kids themselves at their adolescence in developing a system. If we don't, we're going to do a huge disservice to our children. The, I'm also the Chair of the Advisory Committee to the Mahasi Region, the current region here in southeast Iowa. And recognize how much the, the voice of kids and the needs of children have to be at the table. And if they're not, children's needs are not going to be met, be met. I think that's extremely essential to a smooth transition of this system. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have less than a minute left. I'll call on Lisa Heddins and then Director Ianssen will pay your final remarks.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that I was thinking about when you think of a smooth transition. One is remembering that this transition or this new system not only impacts behavioral health, but will also impact people with disabilities as well with the total changes that you're going from with the ASOs to the ADRCs. Additionally, I was at the in-person meeting last Monday, and one of the comments brought up was to help with the transition was if there's going to be any reporting changes to, as far as advance that you can give to providers? Because if there are updated data points they need to start collecting or new systems that they need to purchase for reporting, they want to make sure they have that to help with that transition as well.
Thank you so much. We're going to turn it back over to Director Ianssen.
Thank you so much, Anna-Lisa. So our last screen here does have a website address and a QR code for those individuals that were with us today and you didn't get an opportunity to weigh in with something that is on your mind. That QR code and that website address will take you straight to our Behavioral Health Service System Alignment Page. When you scroll down that page, you'll see a section for public comment that will allow you to submit to us a written public comment. So please, please, please take advantage of that. And in order to get those, those comments into the mix, we do have one last session, an in-person session that will take place on July 18th over in Sioux City, Iowa, as we're continuing to gather this feedback and information. So written public comment or one last in-person session that's scheduled for mid-July. Again, on behalf of Director Garcia and all of us here at Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, we really appreciate you all digging in and joining us today and in our prior sessions. This really is shared work that we're, that we're doing together, and we can't do it without you. Thanks so much and take care.
Thanks, everyone.